Good evening. First of all, I'd like to apologize for being late because we had a number of items that we needed to discuss and so we're now beginning our meeting. I called to order the Thursday, January 24th, 2019, regular monthly meeting to order. At this time, I'd like for you to stand, please, for a moment of silence. Amen. You may be seated. At this time, I'd like Dr. Bracy, and he will introduce the Pledge of Allegiance, students that will be leading the Pledge of Allegiance and the statement. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you Chairman Parent, and I'd like to say good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
And welcome to our school board meeting. This evening, we have Craddock Middle School students that will be representing and presenting to us this evening, and we have three students. And as I call your name, please come forward for the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Kayla Lewis, and I'll give you some background as she comes. Kayla is a thirteen-year-old eighth grade student currently enrolled in Spanish I and English I classes. During her leisure, she enhances her abilities by taking classes in steel drums, sewing, and karate. She enjoys dancing, drawing, baking, and doing her nails. When she leaves Craddock, she plans to continue to make good grades, be the captain of the dance team, graduate at top of her class, and attend college. She would like to be a forensic scientist and a professional dancer when she grows up. The person she looks up to most is her Aunt Tina because she is caring, very intelligent, and strong-minded. She titles her against the biggest goal achiever she knows. Kayla's favorite motto is "I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me," Philippians 4:13. And at this time, if anybody or family is present, will you please stand at this time and be recognized, all family members? Thank you for attending. Next students, the next students I'll call will be doing student statements. The first student, Tavion James, if you'll come forward. Tavion is a fourteen-year-old eighth grade student currently enrolled in keyboarding, which is a high school credit-bearing class. During his free time, he enjoys shopping for clothes and playing video games. Tavion wants to be a criminal lawyer specializing in defense of individuals and companies charged with criminal activity. Tavion plans to continue making good grades and maintain a 4.0 GPA through his high school experience. He admires his mother and grandmother because of their unconditional love for him. Tavion's favorite motto is "Never give up." And at this time, I would like to recognize Tavion's family members. If they're present, will you please stand at this time and be recognized? Thank you all for joining us this evening. Last but definitely not least, Makaya Cross. Makaya is a thirteen-year-old eighth grade student currently enrolled in Spanish I, which is a high school credit course. During her free time, she enjoys cheering, reading, taking trips to Walmart, eating, and sleeping. Makaya plans to graduate with honors from high school and attend college and major in arts. She wishes to become a professional dancer and perform on Broadway. Makaya admires her Grandma Dee because she inspires her to be herself no matter what. Her favorite motto is "What if it doesn't happen? Ah, but what if it does?" Great motto. And at this time, I'd like to recognize any family members that are here with Makaya. Thank you all for coming. Also, I would like to ask Mr. James Avery, the Assistant Principal, to come forward at this time as well while the students present the Pledge of Allegiance and the student statements, and afterwards, he will say a few words. Kayla?
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you.
All about Craddock Middle School. The rapid increase of workers at the Norfolk Shipyard during World War I spurred the growth and development of the Craddock section, our nation's first planned community. The Virginia Register of Historic Places recognized the Craddock community in May 1974 and the National Register of Historic Places in June 1974. Originally named Alpha J Mount Junior High School, it was renamed on July 1st, 1993. The school is nicknamed the Atlas because of its strong ties to the United States Navy. An anchor now graces the entrance to the campus symbolizing the school motto "Anchor in Excellence." Craddock Middle School is dedicated to the individual student development of positive attitudes, skills, knowledge, and responsibilities essentials for successful achievement in school and in society. Through various academic, athletic, and social development programs, Craddock has established strong community partnerships to help us navigate the high seas of personal development. A strong partnership has been established with the Newport News Shipyard. It brings engineers into our school as mentors. The Gold Steppers is a program for young ladies while the YME Club, Young Men Engineering, serves our young men. Craddock Middle School offers football, boys and girls, volleyball, softball, cheerleading, boys and girls, basketball, boys and girls, soccer, track and field, and wrestling. Additional programs include Twenty-First Century, a remediation program, Future Business Leaders of America, FBLA, Student Council Association, Scholastic Bowl, therapeutic day treatment program, Community and Schools, and the Atlas Teacher Association, and Odyssey of the Mass in chorus. Craddock Middle School students are required to wear uniforms. It's the only school in Portsmouth that requires students to wear uniforms.
The current programs in place at Craddock Middle School are: The Twenty-First Century Program is a federal grant-funded program which provides students with enrichment opportunities and data-driven tutoring. The program covers the cost for transportation, food, and wages for teachers who lend their expertise to provide quality instruction to the members of the program. One of the exciting features of the program is the exposure our students experience while attending the many field trips such as Lunch on the Spirit of Norfolk, Adventure at Bush Gardens, and cultural trips to stage plays. The Gold Steppers are a team of female students who come together to thump the yard in support of self-esteem, building strong interpersonal relationship skills, improving academic awareness, and providing cultural experiences. These young ladies compete in step competitions throughout the state of Virginia. Our award-winning step team placed second at the Maggie Walker Governed Schools 2018 competition. The YME program, Young Men in Engineering, is co-sponsored by staff members of Craddock Middle School and engineers from Newport News Shipyard. This program combines twenty male engineers with twenty-five male students who have an active interest in engineering. Students in this program meet twice per month, which enables them to participate in mentoring and learn STEM strands to be exposed to engineering concepts. Established during the 2013-14 school year was our remediation program. The program is geared towards students who have been identified as needing additional support to be academically successful. Remediation is held from 3:15 p.m. to 4:15 p.m., Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday by subject area. Teachers actively volunteer their time to work with students after hours to make sure all students, all admirals succeed. Craddock has an active Future Business Leaders of America, FBLA, organization. Our FBLA placed first at the Spring Conference for the highest middle school attendance in 2017-2018 school year. We are currently second this school year. We also have an active Student Council Association, SCA, and student newspaper programs available to students. All students are encouraged to participate in an extracurricular activity to develop team and people skills. The Parent Teacher Association, PTA, at Craddock Middle School is active and thriving. Through the efforts of the PTA, teachers are provided a Welcome Back to School lunch. There are school volunteers, and there is overwhelming support and assistance for student achievement. The Captains Club is an academic career and personal social program with a mission to develop appropriate interpersonal skills for academic and personal success. The program targets both male and female students in need of guidance and leadership and focuses on building positive attitudes, career awareness, conflict mediation, and self-esteem, introducing participants to develop role models, academic field trips, and reinforcing the importance of education. Community and Schools is an organization that services students who are at risk for missing school, dropping out, and failing to earn a high school diploma. Their goal is to help students stay in school and succeed in life. This year, Community and Schools has adopted a new after-school program entitled Pathways to Opportunity. The program provides tutoring services, mentors, post-secondary preparation, financial literacy, work preparation, and a many of other enrichment opportunities. Our therapeutic day treatment program provides counseling strategies and educational support to build confidence and tools to be successful in school and community settings. They also provide group therapy as well as individual therapy during the school day. At Craddock, we are very proud of our sports program, coaches, and athletes. Since 2010, we have won ten boys championships, seven girls championships, and four Scholastic Bowl championships, for a total of seventeen championships. Our girls' basketball team is a three-time defending champions, boys' volleyball team is a three-time defending champions, our football team has won three out of five championships, and our girls' and boys' track teams have won four out of the last five track titles respectively. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to tell you about Craddock Middle School, where we are anchored in excellence.
Hold up, students. We have Ms. Atkinson. Would you like to make a comment? Students, would you come back? We have a board member, Ms. Atkinson, would like to make a comment. Thank you.
Hey, everybody. First off, I just want to say great job, and I'm glad to see programs like the FBLA still in existence. Not long ago, I was also a member of the FBLA, and I'm happy to hear about the new programs like the Engineering Program. So you guys are here at a great time. There's a discussion that we're going to have regarding the uniforms. So you guys are an excellent group of students, so I would like to hear your feedback on the uniform policy from each of you, if you guys don't mind.
I actually like the uniforms because without uniforms, I wake up, I don't know what I'm going to wear, it's very stressful, and I also feel as if when we go to school, everyone is judging us about what we're wearing, what type of shoes we have on, what type of hair we have, and stuff like that. So when we wear uniforms, everyone is equal, everyone is alike, and no one is feeling judged. Thank you.
Anybody else want to?
Well...
That last sentence was...
I dislike uniforms because I have my own style, and it just ruins my, I don't know, expression or something, but I just don't like uniforms.
Okay.
I would like to say I dislike the uniforms because I can't express myself creatively, like my creativity, and I feel as if we can't, we can't as a whole be unique in our own way. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Barnes, wait a minute, students. Mr. Barnes?
I'm sorry. I just want to know, how do you feel about you guys wearing uniforms and the other schools not wearing the uniforms?
Okay. We are not like any other school. We are very unique, and I do not want to be like them, honestly. That is my opinion. We are Craddock Middle School, okay? You know what I'm saying? And, you know, some people has their opinions about those, about the uniforms. But you know, we come to school to learn. It is not about what we are wearing, okay? You should not be coming to school worried about what someone else is thinking about you, okay? Because you are here for your education and your education only. You are not here for your friends, those teachers, or anyone else. You are here for yourself. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Avery?
You don't have to follow.
No, no, we're not, I'm not asking you your opinion on it. We're going to do that later.
On behalf of the other two-thirds of the Craddock administrative team, our Principal, Mr. Sean Howard, our other Assistant Principal, Dr. Patricia Gritzby, I want to first of all thank our students for being out here tonight. They did a fantastic job representing Craddock Middle School. I also want to thank their families and their parents that came along with them for their support of not only their students, but also our educational program. We also have some of our faculty members here, our Guidance Director and eighth-grade Guidance Counselor, Ms. Shonda Williams. Stand up, please. Thank you. Business teacher, Ms. Dana Basset, and math teacher, Ms. Brenda Joseph. So we want to thank them all for being out here tonight and supporting our students.
Very good. Thank you. Wait a minute, students. Ms. Hines has a presentation she'd like to make.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for sharing. I'll have all of you know, I did my first student teaching at Craddock Middle, so I cut my teeth at Craddock Middle, so you guys have a special place in my heart at Craddock Middle. So thank you for being here. Thank you for representing. Thank you for speaking your mind and being the only one willing to be different. Because that is a characteristic that we need, that somebody that can speak their mind, and at your age, I look forward to what you can do. So congratulations and thank you. And thank you for being here, poised, professional, ready to take on the world. You guys did an awesome job tonight and keep working for those goals. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and thank you, parents and teachers, for coming out this evening. Before we go to the next item on the agenda, I would like to recognize Councilman, the Honorable Nathan Clark, who is on the City Council. Thank you for coming tonight. Councilman Clark is the city representative, liaison representative, and we're going to be meeting, I think, in the first week in February. I think Louise Lucas Burke is the other representative, and then Lisa Lucas Burke is the other representative, and you will be meeting with myself and our Vice Chair. So look forward to that meeting. The next item on the agenda, I want to recognize, and I know it's been a long day for our two new board members, because they've been in Richmond today, and they had to come, they came back tonight for the meeting. So Board Member DeAndre Barnes and Mrs. Tamara Schumate, we want to welcome you, your first official meeting tonight, and I know that this has been a long day, and you've got a lot of information that you've learned today, so. And the reason I wanted to emphasize the school board members is that this is the beginning of a new year, and each year, the Virginia School Board Association, we have a code of conduct for school board members, and it says, "As a member of my local school board, I strive to be an advocate for students and to improve public education, and to that end, number one, I will have integrity in all matters and support in full development of all children and welfare of the community, the Commonwealth, and the nation. Number two, I will attend scheduled board members' meetings. Number three, I will come to board meetings informed concerning the issues under consideration. Number four, I will make policy decisions based on the available facts and appropriate public input. Number five, I will delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent and establish a process for accountability of administration. Number six, I will encourage individual board members of expression of opinion and establish an open, two-way communication process with all segments of the community. Number seven, I will communicate in accordance with board policies, public reaction, and opinion regarding board policies and school programs to the full board and superintendent. Number eight, I will bring about desired changes through legal and ethical procedures, upholding and enforcing all laws, state regulations, and court orders pertaining to schools. Number nine, I will refrain from using the board position for personal or partisan gain and avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety. Number ten, I will respect the confidentiality of privileged information and make no individual decisions or commitments that might compromise the board or administration. Number eleven, I will be informed about current and educational issues through individual study and participation in appropriate programs such as those sponsored by my state and national school board association. And lastly, I will always remember that the foremost concern of the board is to improve and enhance the teaching and learning experience for all students in the public schools of Virginia. And what I'm asking the board members, before you leave tonight, I've already signed it, if you'll recall, last year, we had a poster out in front in the lobby. I will have this blown up. I would like each board member to sign this before you leave tonight, and I will have the poster displayed so that the citizens will know, will see the code of conduct, okay? Pass it on down. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is, board members, please indicate your preference through electronic vote, and that means if you're here, you want to push the green button. Madam Clark?
Mr. Barnes, just push it. Ms. Atkinson? All members are present.
All right. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and there is one correction, and we'll amend it. It's item 10.1, Discussion Budget Update, that will be deleted, so 10.2 become item 10.1. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Motion's been made. And second, any discussion, here are no discussion, board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Ms. Hines, your name popped up?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I didn't get to it before we voted.
That's okay. Do you want me to read the mission statement?
I am very, I am very sorry. I jumped, yes, I do want you to read that.
And number two, can we have a budget update is being deleted. I know we had a budget update and work session. I just want to make sure that, because that we had it in there. Okay? Thank you.
That's correct. Would you read?
Yes, I'll read the mission statement now, and I forgot to turn on my microphone, I'm sorry for those that didn't hear. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
All right. Since we've had no discussion, would you, we did approve the agenda, didn't we?
Yes.
All right. Next item on the agenda, oh, the best part of the night, Ms. Bellamy, it's your time, and it looks like from your report, you've been a very busy lady. And thank you for all the work that you do.
You're welcome. Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair William, good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Patillo, Dr. Bracy, members of the school board. So since I last saw you guys back in December, I've been really busy. I spent the holiday break feeding the homeless and passing out clothes and like soaps and stuff that they would need. So that was really fun. I met a lot of different people, toured Portsmouth, a lot of places I haven't been, so that was nice. Just to update you on some of the things going on in the division, the school division is offering free and reduced lunch for students and families affected by the government shutdown. On last week, January 14th, students in high school started at TCC in the First College Program. Now, for those that you, for those that don't know, First College gives high school seniors the opportunity to earn high school and college credits before they graduate. I'm a part of that program, and it is really nice. The TCC campus is beautiful, and all of the professors and the students over there, we really love it, so we appreciate that. Some complaints that I've been hearing from the students, the tardy slips aren't giving the correct date, so it'll tell you one day on your tardy slip to go to ISS, but then the office will tell you another date, and that's hurting the students because they're expecting to go to ISS on one day, but then the office will change it. So if they had made plans to like take a test, or they aren't in school and they miss it, ISS days will get added when, on the sheet, if it would have just told them, they would have avoided all of that and just been in there. So if we could get that fixed. So for students that are watching, if you email me at student.reap@portsk12.com, I can hear all of your questions, concerns, complaints, some announcements. I would like to congratulate Mr. Parent for being re-elected as chairman, and Mr. Patillo for being elected as vice chair. I would also like to congratulate Ms. Schumate and Mr. Barnes, our newly elected school board members. I'm looking forward to working with you guys. Portsmouth's finest recording will be soon, so I can have another episode out. I think I'm going to interview Ms. Schumate and Mr. Barnes first, and then I'll make my rounds to the rest of the board. Dr. Bracy's Superintendent Advisory Committee has a meeting scheduled on February 11th for the students pre-selected, so remember to look out for that. January 25th and January 28th are full days due to hurricane, yeah, hurricane makeup back at the beginning of the school year. And for those that don't, if you could, follow me on Twitter at PPSstudent underscore rep. That's all.
Very good. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you tonight for your report, and you mentioned First College, so now that you've been in, I guess, your first few days of college courses, can you give us a little overview of the difference between college courses and what you've done in high school in the past?
It's a lot harder to, I guess, stay on track because in high school, like your classes are right after each other, but now at TCC, it's like you probably have a class that's over at 9:15, and then your next class isn't till 1:00, so it's easy to get distracted. I've also noticed that the professors aren't as nice as...
That's probably not the words you're looking for. Not as lenient.
Not as lenient as the teachers in the high school. That was a big shocker. And then just the way we interact with each other is a lot different. I guess some of the stuff that professors do, you probably wouldn't see a Portsmouth Public Schools teacher doing, so it's a little tricky to manage, but it's fun. The game room is nice.
So you're getting an early start on what college courses and the whole atmosphere looks like now?
Yeah, it's good to go there now because, well, for example, I wanted to major in sociology, and now that I'm taking that course, it's like, hmm, maybe that's not what you want to do, so it's good to get an idea and kind of sort some things out in my life.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you. The next item is Under Student Discipline Religious Exemption. Item 4.1, Consideration of a Religious Exemption, case number 201819 slash... Item 4.1, Consideration of a Religious Exemption, case number 2018-19 slash 08. The recommendation is to defer. What is the board's recommendation?
Motion for approval.
Motion's been made. And second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, make your opinion known by voting.
It's unanimous.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is Consideration of Expulsion, Disciplined Case Number 2018-19 slash 07. If you vote yes, you're voting for expulsion. If you vote no, you're not voting for expulsion, and the student goes back to the school tomorrow. Board members, do I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Motion's been made.
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please make your vote by electronic.
None, no votes.
Thank you. The student returns to school tomorrow. The item, the next item on the agenda is 4.3, Consideration of Expulsion, Disciplined Case Number 2018-19 08. The recommendation is to go to trade.
Motion for approval. Second.
Motion's been made. And second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please make your notice by electronic vote. And Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
The next item on the agenda is Consideration of Expulsion Case 2018-19 09. The recommendation is expulsion.
Motion for approval. Second.
Motion's been made. And second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please voice your vote by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Moving right on to the Curriculum and Instruction Report that we...
I have one question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the item that we deferred, 4.1, will we be able to vote on that at our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
We've got to get more...
Yes. I just want to make sure we have a time line.
Yep. Yeah, they're gonna, we've got to get more clarity. Right, right. All right, this is the fun part, Curriculum and Instruction. Ms. Win, Dr. Win.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Parent, Chairman Parent and Vice Chairman Patillo. We're going to get that right after a while. And board members, a special welcome to Ms. Schumake and Mr. Barnes. I'm looking forward to working with you all, as well as the rest of the board, as we continue to do exciting things with curriculum and instruction in Portsmouth. Tonight, we have a different type of report because typically, we do have students come during this time to talk about their firsthand experiences here in the programs that we have in Portsmouth. Earlier tonight, I shared with you the two students who came at 5:30. Their names were Courtney Bagby and Kiana Lee, and they will be returning next month to give us more detailed information around pharmacy technician program and the cosmetology program that they're in. So at this time, I just want to highlight that we are doing some wonderful things with students in our schools. I want to also encourage members of the audience, the board, and those who are watching, to tap into our cosmetology services at IC Norcom High School. We have programs there for the public, and they have, I believe, Friday hours where they do nail services and salon services there, and it's a great opportunity for our students to get experience and for our community and our publics to participate in our programs. So we are very excited about that.
I'm looking forward to getting mine done.
Looking forward to getting those nails done.
Dr. Bracy, I don't get ours done.
And I will also draw your attention to the written report that is in your board docs. If you have any questions about that, I will entertain those at this time. And if not, we're looking forward to more great and exciting things in curriculum and instruction.
Very good.
Thank you.
I don't see any comments, so thank you very much. All right, moving on, on the resolutions. This will be a consent agenda. You'll be voting on both items. Who is going, Dr. Carmody's going to be reading both. You're going to be reading both, right?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the school board. Tonight, I bring forth two resolutions for your consideration. The first pertains to February's distinction as African-American History Month. Whereas as advocates for children, we work to provide appropriate opportunities for them to acquire the tools, skills, and knowledge necessary for their success and future well-being. And whereas education is an integral part of instilling an appreciation for America's defining values, freedom, equality, and respect for one another. And whereas the Portsmouth City School Board is proud to support America's role as a leader of discovery and innovation, and is deeply committed to ensuring that our graduates possess marketable skills. And whereas the professional staff has a duty to provide a comprehensive and competitive education for all students. Whereas February is traditionally designated to recognize the achievements and contributions of African-Americans to the development and sustainability of our democracy, now therefore be it resolved, that the Portsmouth City School Board recognizes February as Black History Month, celebrating all the important roles of African-Americans to the evolution of our city, Commonwealth, and nation. And be it further resolved, that this resolution be archived as part of Portsmouth School Board's official records.
Okay. Would you read the next resolution, please?
The second resolution is for career and technical education. Whereas economical, economic and technological changes affect the nature of our work, placing an increasing demand on public education. And whereas career and technical education provides our communities with school-to-career connections and is the cornerstone of a strong, well-prepared workforce, fostering instructional productivity and contributing to America's leadership in the international marketplace. And whereas career and technical education provides students rich experiences in the practical applications of workplace readiness skills designed to improve the quality of education by providing opportunities for all students to experience leadership. And whereas our community, I'm sorry, career and technical education programs afford students chances to acquire learning experiences necessary to succeed in a complex society. And whereas the ever-increasing efforts of career and technical educators, business and industry support the growth and vitality of our local, state, and national economies by preparing graduates for rewarding career fields. And whereas the theme of this year's observance is celebrate today, own tomorrow, now therefore be it resolved, that the Portsmouth School Board recognizes February 1st through 28th of 2019 as Career Technical Education Month. And be it further resolved, that this resolution be made part of the board's permanent record and that copies be disseminated throughout the school division and that a framed copy be formally presented to the curriculum and instruction staff at the board's regular monthly meeting scheduled for Thursday, January 24th, 2019.
Thank you. Board members, we're going to be voting on 6.1 and 6.2. What is the board's pleasure?
Motion for approval.
Motion's been made. And second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, this is electronic vote. Please make your preference. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carmody. The next item is Consideration of the Minutes, December the 6th, 2018, and December the 13th, 2018. What is the board's pleasure?
Motion for approval. Second.
Motion's been made. And second, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, this is electronic vote. Please vote accordingly. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is Public Comment. Madam Clerk, do we have people to address non-agenda items?
Yes, sir.
All right. If you'll please read the...
The Portsmouth City School Board is always interested in hearing from the citizens of its community. If you have registered to speak prior to this meeting, the clerk will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. If you have not registered prior to the meeting, you may be given an opportunity to speak by the chairman after the first group has been called by the clerk. When speaking, please keep your comments focused on issues that are of general interest to the school division and the community. This public comments period is for non-agenda items only. Due to the length of our meetings, the school board requires that you keep your comments to five minutes. An addition, a few minutes may be granted by the chairman. Mrs. Brenda Joseph?
He can read it. Can I bring it to you?
Yes. You want this entered into the minutes? Okay.
First, I want to correct a statement I made to some of the people that work for Portsmouth. When I worked for Portsmouth Public School as a school bus driver, I drove for IC Norcom, John Tower, and Douglas Park. Well, I thought I was giving out the right information. Well, I called this person in December, and the person called me back, and I was told, no, that was wrong. I was the assistant principal, not the principal. So that's straight now. Person was assistant principal when I drove for Douglas Park, not the principal. Now, I'm about the security system. I've been to church in primary three times and got in without showing my ID. I've been to church in middle, church in high, no problem. I get my ID checked before I get in there. And now, I know y'all can't see this, but this is back from March of 2017, where they were still double pulling in the circle there to pick up children. A child got hit about five years ago there. They called three times this year already and asked in parents and guardians not to double through that circle. I think it's time the school took control of it. They got cones, they could put cones out and block it where you could only go in there one line of traffic at a time before another child gets hit. Now, about what I just passed you, if I would've known that kind of language went on at a high school, I would've never had a molly in that class. That's every day, something like that from that class. I don't care if it is a high school, the college credit, she's only 15. I don't take her to church for her to go to school and listen to that kind of language and see that kind of language. And I'm asking y'all to reconsider what y'all vote on to put in public school so these other children won't have it, because if it keeps on, I will pull all three of mine out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Donna Sya?
My name is Donna Sya, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. In Richmond today, there was a public hearing on the final review of the Model Guidance for Positive and Preventive Code of Student Conduct Policy and Alternative to Suspensions. And the purpose of the document is to guide school boards to establish a policy that promotes a vision for improving conditions for learning so that all students experience a safe, supportive school environment that allows them to acquire the attributes outlined in the Virginia Board of Education's profile of a graduate. In addition, local policies shall also set the tone for school climate. School climate involves all of the members of the school community and is a reflection of the relationships, practices, and organization of the school community and establishing conditions for learning to support the physical and emotional safety, connection, support, and engagement of students. Other policies address the role of the community. Schools and school divisions should not be expected to stand alone when addressing the needs of struggling students. Therefore, it is vital that schools and school divisions develop collaborative partnerships within the community to meet the needs of students. And the policy addresses school discipline. All students have a right to adequate and meaningful due process prior to being excluded from school for disciplinary purposes. Schools should ensure that students and families understand school discipline processes and their related right to due process. This vision outlined in this document is not a positive or preventive measure for learning in a safe, supportive school environment. This vision of the Board of Education does not seek a proactive approach to climate change by communication and responsibility. So the International Institute for Restorative Practices, Safer, Saner Schools, Whole School Change Program is a cost-effective way to achieve lasting change that enhances and builds relationships between students, staff, and parents, improves student behavior, reduces violence and bullying, and creates a sense of community. And there are 11 essential elements which help students express their feelings in response to specific positive or negative behaviors of others. And that is using effective statements which humanizes the person making the immediately changing the dynamic between the people involved. And this is what we need to implement in our school, is restorative justice practices so that our schools can maintain good climate and safety. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have other speakers?
Mr. Barry Randall.
Mr. Randall.
Good evening, Chair Parent, Vice Chair Patillo, our members at large, Dr. Bracy. I want to welcome Ms. Schumake and Mr. Barnes to our school board. I'm confident that you guys are going to serve our children and the staff very well. I'm here tonight to address you guys. You all know when I stand, I'm going to always stand to speak truth to power.
Right.
Mr. Parent, I want to thank you because my mentor pulled me to the side some time ago and told me to kind of check the record, and I was able to go back and look at your record. So I want to apologize to you because, you know, despite some of the negative criticism that has been come your way, and people want to speculate your party affiliations, I'm thankful to know that you have voted for the interests of my grandchildren and for the children of this community. My grandchildren go to Portsmouth Public Schools. I'm concerned, and I'm glad that Councilman Nathan Clark is here so he can take this back to the council members because he is one that we supported. Brought him to my church and with the former mayor, Kenny Wright, and we supported him. And as you all can see, it got us nowhere in this community. I'm concerned because on last night, we had a shooting in the city. Last Saturday, we had a killing in the city. The first Monday of January, we had a killing in the city. The 21st, I believe, of December, we had a 12-year-old young boy killed in the city. Back in October, we had, or September, we had a 16-year-old boy killed in the city. And these are the children of Portsmouth Public Schools. I received a phone call from a council member right after the reorganization meeting, and I was kind of concerned because I had never witnessed a mayor and council members coming to a reorganization meeting, like, what is this all about? Like, why are they so interested? And this particular council member asked me, what happened? I said, what do you mean, what happened? And, you know, they said, Mayor Rowe told us it was going to be some changes. He was giving us a new chair. And that's very disheartening for me because I've supported a lot of you all up there. And I look at this board, I heard Chair Parent say at that particular meeting that you all can be a distinct board. We have community representation from Mr. Barnes, Ms. Atkinson. We have educators from Ms. Hines and Mr. Parent and Mr. Lamb. We have healthcare profession from Ms. Allen. We have Ms. Schumake in Lawfield. We have behavior health with Ms. Williams, educated from Mr. Patillo, as well as clergy with him, Mr. Parent. So I'm looking forward to this particular board doing great things and not catering to a mayor that does not support public education. Something is wrong if our mayor would come and sit in a meeting and listen to everything up to the point of the reorganization part piece, and if he was really there out of genuine support, then he would've stayed to the end to shake Mr. Parent's hand and to shake Mr. Patillo's hand to say congratulations. So that's how I know the council member that called me isn't lying because the person that didn't get picked was obviously his choice. My concern with this particular piece is that our city is suffering. My concern with this particular piece is that our city is suffering. Our young black men, it is a scientific fact that nothing that is endangered comes about by natural causes. When something is endangered, it's because it has been hunted. And our black boys and black men have been hunted. I don't care the reason, whether it's the police, whether it's each other, at the end of the day, we're suffering in our community. And even if you look at Virginia Beach, before Mayor Cecil left, and you can fact-check this, he told them, "Whatever you do, take care of the schools." We should be concerned when we have a mayor who is a registered Democrat. That's a fact. But he caters to the Tea Party. This same mayor who fooled me, I took him out swans at home and walked the neighborhoods with him, haven't been back since. Mr. Barnes went before this very council and talked about his 12-year-old cousin being gunned down the street.
Mr. Randall, you have 15 seconds.
Thank you. Nothing was said, even, not even sorry for your loss publicly. My point that I'm making is, we are working hard to ensure that Mayor Rowe is sent home in 2020. If you are a board member here that is going to be working with him, I will be working hard to send you home with him.
I have one comment that I'd like to make to you. It's that I spent 40 years on the other side as a classroom teacher, an assistant principal, and a principal, and now eight years I have completed. So, I've spent 48 years of my life as an advocate for children, and four more years, if the Lord lets me do this, I will always advocate for children. That is my passion, and I appreciate you bringing that to my, to the attention, because we walk in that boardroom, we leave all of our, all that stuff behind, because our focus, and our new board members learned today, that our focus is on student achievement. And so, we lay aside all the other stuff, because our concern is, one, we've got to have funding, you're exactly right, and two, that we've got to make sure our children have the best education possible. So, thank you for addressing that.
May I respond to that real quickly? And that's my point. We have lost a school. This superintendent has had to close down a school due to the lack of funding. This superintendent had to cut positions due to the lack of funding. Casino, yes, from this mayor. Fix the roof, twice, $2 million from this mayor, yes. Buy commercial property, $1.8 million, yes, from this mayor. But when it comes down to funding public education, it is always a no. We can't afford to have you all, I said this to you all before, and I wanted to reiterate because we have two board members, again, I have utmost confidence in them, we can't have you supporting Dr. Bracy behind the scene and playing both sides of the aisle, because I won't allow it. I'm a bus driver, what's the worst that could happen to me? I will not allow it. So, I just want to leave you guys with this, because I'm interested in knowing. I have grandchildren that goes to Portsmouth Public Schools. Some of you all have children. How many of you all, by way of hand, and John Rowe will be watching this, how many of y'all, by way of hand, are pleased with the direction that this school is going in?
We have to be real careful about that, so...
Okay, that's fine. But I want to raise my hand, because I am pleased with the direction that this school division is going in. And when I leave this podium, I'm not hightailing it out of here, I'm going to go and pick up some low-income kids who this mayor won't support and take home.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mrs. Sergio O'Neil.
Good evening. My name is Sergio O'Neil. I live in the Cavallo Manor section of this city. I want to change the narrative a little bit. First and foremost, I'm going to say this right now, so only by the side, say it behind their back. For this, in order for this school system to actually function in this city like it's supposed to, we need to be building a relationship with our city council and not tearing it down. You know, I mean, I think we've been embarrassed enough by the shenanigans and all of that, and now that these meetings are live, I'm quite sure somebody's at home looking like, "What in the world is going on?" We don't need the dramatics, because guess what? At the end of the day, when our school system is struggling and our teachers are fed up and they're ready to walk out, that's a problem. I don't care where the money comes from or how it gets there, what public education should and needs to be funded. So, next point. Red for Ed is coming up on Monday, January 28th. I would like to see how many board members are in support of these teachers that are going to Richmond, that are going to advocate for education reform, because guess what? As I have said in conversation with plenty of people, education reform starts right here, right here, right here within this city, because no matter what comes down from the state, you all have some input in that, too. You all have the input from the local level. And I'm quite sure that these teachers and staff with Portsmouth Public Schools would love to see your commitment and supporting them when they go to Richmond and they're advocating for their jobs and their positions. Things they don't do, I'm quite sure no teacher would stand up and say, "I just do this for the money," especially the long-term teachers that have been teaching for 30-plus years, because I can almost guarantee that the money is not even the issue. They do it because they love what they do, they do it because they have a heart for what they do, and they have a passion for what they do. The new teachers that have, that are in this district, I'm quite sure they came with, wanted a new avenue to make a difference in this city. So, I hope you all support everything that they do, and they are the ones that may need to take that day. I know Portsmouth has a full day on Monday. Other districts have that off. I get that. But at the same time, too, we need to make sure that as whatever happens, that this board is committed to making sure that they support these teachers and everything they are advocating for, not only the teachers, but this other staff, the support staff that are going with them, too. Next point. I understand that this school board is looking at a raise for themselves. Trust me, I get that wholeheartedly. At the same time, too, I'm going to share my personal opinion on it. As a board member, I do not think it would be wise to even have that conversation right now, when you have teachers and staff that are scraping for every penny that they get. I would think that the direction would be that you all postpone that until you all find out just how much, if, if any at all, a raise the teachers and staff of this school district are going to get, and to make sure that's in place first before anything else. In my honest opinion, I mean, and trust me, I'm not saying that you all don't deserve it. At the same time, too, as leaders, if they have to struggle, you all have to be in that struggle with them. And I get it, five grand a year is not a lot of money. Trust me, I know. That's why I work two jobs, because I have to make more than one. But anyway, we need you all to know that the leadership has to reflect the people that they are leading. It would be unfair to the teachers and staff of this school division to say, "Hey, yeah, my board got a raise, but what about us?" I know, even though the money is in different places, but at the same time, too, that would be a representation of you all standing with them and standing in the struggle with them and saying, "Hey, we understand where you're coming from." policymaking is not a hard, is not an easy job. It is a very tiring, very hard job. Trust me, I'm learning as I go, as my career in education has started, and every time you turn around, there's always something new. It does not change. It's always something, day in and day out. And sometimes the decisions that have to be made are hard, but very necessary. Sometimes they can come, especially for me personally, I have this experience, at 4:00 in the morning. But at the same time, too, this is what the job entails. I don't think any of you all do this job for the money, because nobody can live off of $5,000 a year. Trust me, I know. Every time I buy my son a pair of shoes, I'm looking at, looking at another job, because I'm like, "This is getting old."
You have 20 seconds.
But I just want you all to know, again, that we, that as a board, I need, I personally would like to see the relationship between the school board and the city council change. I would like to see the relationship between the school board and the staff of Portsmouth Public Schools change for the positive and be the model for the state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Ms. Nevee Williams.
Wait a minute. Ms. Atkinson, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Good evening.
You want to wait, you want to wait? Go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Nevee Williams, and it's spelled heaven spelled backwards. Today, I'm going to be saying John 3:16. John 3: "For God's love, the world that ye gave is only but God and Son, and whosoever believes him should not bear his but of everlasting life."
Amen. Thank you very much. Ms. Atkinson?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. My mic is not on. In heaven, before you leave, I see why your name is heaven. Great job, John 3:60. Okay. So, I was, my initial request to speak was for Sergio. Sergio, you know, we can agree to disagree at times, but in reference to the raise for the school board, my vote and my thoughts on that is that the school board members do deserve a raise. The reason for that is, I can't see myself being on a job for 20 years and not getting a raise. Anybody can check my voting records. Each year, I opt and I vouch for an increase for the staff of Portsmouth Public Schools. So, I'm not only fighting for a raise for the school board members, but I'm fighting for a raise for everyone in Portsmouth Public Schools. So, I'm going to tell everybody now on the record that I'm going to unapologetically vote for a school board increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have additional speakers?
Mr. Amar Skinner.
Good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank the board for allowing me the opportunity to actually speak to you. My name is Amar Ashi Skinner. I'm a representative and founder of the E-Firm, the Ex Felon Entrepreneurship Retail Museum of Avoidance out here in Portsmouth, Virginia. I've been meaning to come to these meetings for a while and try to get more familiar with you all and exactly who's on the board and the chairman is all, get a more interpersonal relationship with you, so that you can learn a little bit about me and what I do and about the agenda of the E-Firm. The E-Firm is a museum of avoidance to try to strive to avoid kids from going to prison by educating them with an alternative form of education on how not to go to prison. And through that, when they visit the E-Firm, we actually give them a tour called, a tour called Breaking Out of the Box. The actual box that we strive to break them out of is the box of unawareness about the prison agenda and giving them a reality about how their freedom is sometimes being exchanged for profit and being voted against for profit even in certain situations. But the reality is, we try to wake them up psychologically to the point of their responsibility to not be a product of promoter, a promoter of their own destruction, because a lot of times, they don't understand that their activity actually promotes their position into the school-to-prison pipeline. People talk about the school-to-prison pipeline, the foster care-to-prison pipeline, the runaway-to-prison pipeline, but there are a lot of people don't get exactly to the actual cause of it. They deal with the symptoms of it. So, we try to get to the root of it, which is bringing them into the awareness and having them be cognizant of the agenda. After following a tour at the museum, we try to introduce them to the programs that we established at the Certified Development Coaching Group through our empirical evidence-based curriculums. And with those curriculums, we actually are giving them the foundation base to understand unidentified anger, unidentified peer pressure, unidentified bullying, because sometimes you don't know you're being bullied until it's too late. So, I heard a lot of people explain things about their concerns coming up here, where one guy particularly explained his concerns for the youth out there in the streets that's dying from gun violence. You know, we try to really, we have methods that really, really engage them into becoming cognizant of their potential outside of that activity. I could go into a lot, I'm kind of jumbling, I know I got five minutes, and I wasn't prepared to really come up here and talk to you, but I'm always prepared to speak, because what I do, I do it from the heart. I don't need a practice exam to do this. Like, everything we teach them, we teach it from our experience. So, it's not theoretical. It's based on empirical evidence. And you and I both know that when you can deal with an empirical evidence approach, pretty much you can reach that empathetic level of a person that's not being reached, because we both know that a lot of kids are only dying out here because of a lack of, a lack of empathy. They have a sense of suspended empathy that they know nothing about. Empathy is when you're able to put yourself in the shoes of another and actually feel the pain that they might actually engage if you commit certain actions. So, the proactive approach is being cognizant, and that's what we're trying to bring them to awareness of. I really hope that you're respecting museum and trying to help you further the education of these kids. Alternative education is very, very necessary. I write books. I have books in Barnes &amp; Nobles. I have a new book coming out, and all these books are built around behavioral modification and changing thought processes that convict people to unfortunate circumstances. So, with that being said, I'll let you down, I won't hold your time too long. I just want you to know that, you know, we here for you, and we understand the concerns of the community, and we do this whole holiday from the heart. I make my own money, it ain't about money. Trust me, I got eight businesses. I do make good money. But, you know, we here for you. Bring the kids to the museum, and I hope you'll join us in the mission.
Thank you very much, Mr. Skinner. Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any others? Oh, well, sorry, Mr. Barnes and then Ms. Atkinson. Mr. Skinner, I think, I think two board members would like to ask...
I'm sorry.
That's okay. We have two board members. Mr. Barnes is first, and then Ms. Atkinson.
I want to thank you for what you do with the kids. You said you had a museum. Where's the location?
It's right here in Portsmouth, at 4202 Portsmouth Boulevard. Thanks for asking me that. Yes, it's at 4202 Portsmouth Boulevard, right beside the Old Bay. That spot is not big enough for this museum concept. It's just a prototype. We've been in New Jersey, Pennsylvania. We have the museum going in every state that go near in America who has an ex-felon problem or a problem with preventing youth from going to prison. We're actually moving out, and we have a lot, a whole lot of contacts with this mission that's very concerned with the Virginia issues that's going on, and these are people that's out of state, because we know that this is a national issue. This is not a one-city issue or a one-state issue. One community that's disrupted in California, that kid gets sit here and disrupt your kid. You know, that's just how it go. They don't remain in California where they grew up at. I know because me and my co-defendant, both at 19-years-old, when I was about to graduate high school, I was sent off to prison for 10 years, where I spent 10 years and 10 months. I came home when I was 30, and in the process of coming home, you know, it was a lot of challenges. But at the same time, I had prepared myself to come home and take a proactive approach versus a reactive approach. So, it put me, allowing me to put myself in the position to win. And, you know, I could say I'm winning not because of money, but because of internalized success, you know, and understanding and recognizing the talents that's within and expressing them with not a waste form of expression, meaning utilizing time and not abusing it, but utilizing it properly. So, I learned to use that, and I could teach it to somebody. So, you know, I really hope you will send the kids down and come network, work with us, because it's not just for kids, it's for adults, too, because we know that adults have challenges getting a good start, right? You know, you know, they said it's, that sum is never greater than the whole, the good start. So, we pretty much identified the missing pieces, and we put them together, and we got very strategic methods on doing it. So, I'll tell you, investigate. You know, don't judge a book by its cover, not saying that you are, but I know that's a pattern that pretty much we did, what I call normalcy bias. You know, a lot of people can't take a different look at something that's pretty much they've never seen before, so they never get a different outlook. And if you want a different outlook on what's happening with this ratio of kids being killed going to prison, E-Firm, your man, telling you.
All right, wait a minute. Ms. Atkinson?
Hey, Amir, I've been actually following you for a while, been meaning to visit the museum. What I like about you and how you speak and even in your books is that you have a relatable experience. Our demographics of kids, I mean, we have kids in third grade that are gang members. So, I don't know how we could fit this in, maybe a field trip, or, I mean, we can, we can talk to Dr. Winn about it, or maybe we can have some of our at-risk kids actually visit the museum and you speak with them, because you speak from experience. You've actually been there, you've been through the system. And sometimes they, they don't listen to nobody who haven't been through, you know, what they see, because that's their everyday lifestyle. So, I was going to ask for the information, but we have it now. So, thanks so much for taking the time, and you're right, you should have been came here.
Yeah. Hey, I appreciate that. And one more thing, just know that when we do connect with them and put them on the light path, we're really, and when I say the light path, everybody who come in contact with us, we put them on the light path, which we call our golden journey. We stay connected to them, you know, and we give them the means to coach the coach through our program, because everybody has a coach in them. And so, we coach the coach. Whatever we teach them, we teach them to deliver it and give it to somebody else. All right? I thank y'all, I don't want to take up your time like that.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
Not for non-agenda.
All right, the next item is the public comment on board agenda items. Do we have any speakers? All right, the next item is the public comment on board agenda items. Do we have any speakers?
Mr. Janir Davis. Janar, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Dr. Bracy, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Janari Davis. I am a ninth grader at IC Norcom High School here in Portsmouth. I am coming to you today this evening to speak to you all about the uniforms at Carratt Middle School. As you know, or if you don't know already, Carratt is the only school, middle school in Portsmouth and the only school in Portsmouth that has been wearing uniforms. To majority of us students and former students at Carratt Middle School, having uniforms is not fair. The uniforms were put in place to stop gang violence. When the uniform policy was put in place in the 90s, gang violence was said to be very high. The students and former students of Carratt Middle School feel like the schools should not be able to control what we wear. What, or what some, what some kids wear. Some kids like myself like to dress up at school and where uniforms put limitations on us. Some parents and adults might say uniforms decrease bullying, and it does. However, students still get bullied, still get bullied with uniforms because they can't wash their uniform, shirt, or pants due to challenging and personal circumstances. Seventh graders must wear yellow or gray collared shirts. For the pants, they can wear khaki or black pants. So I think that the uniform policy at Carratt should be taken, taken away, or the students at Waters and Churchville Middle School should be required to wear them too. But I believe that the other middle schools and students will not want to wear uniforms. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight on behalf of the student body at Carratt Middle School and Portsmouth Public Schools. I hope my thoughts and concerns will help your decisions about the uniform policy at Carratt Middle School. If you need to contact me, I can be reached at janari.davis@portsk12.com.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Marcus Baker.
How y'all doing? Good evening. My name is Marcus Baker and I am a parent of an eighth grade student at Carratt Middle. Also, I was employed at Carratt Middle School from 2013 until 2016, and I'm a graduate of Portsmouth Public Schools myself in 2005. While employed at Carratt, I founded a mentorship program geared towards promoting leadership in young men. The program was highlighted by Channel 3 News. And now the 11 young men will be graduating on schedule in 2020, while two will graduate one year early in 2019. My first issue with the uniform policy is I believe it is prejudice to students who are required to wear them. When I say prejudice, I am speaking in the truest meaning of the term, to give rise to prejudice and so on or to make bias. Does that convey a message to this group of students that they shouldn't be afforded the same freedom of expression as other students in the same school division? Why are students required to follow the same curriculum and same discipline policies, but not the same dress code policy? I started Portsmouth Public Schools in 1992, and all the other schools I can recollect being required to wear uniforms were S.H. Clark Elementary School and Hunt Mount Middle School, both which had large populations of students who lived in public housing or low-income areas like Carratt. Also, both the previously mentioned schools are no longer in service for students. Is this another message that we are conveying for our students that eventually, you know, Carratt could be out of the, just thrown away too? I can understand uniforms may help parents with the cost of school clothes as well as combat gang activity, but what data actually shows that these goals have been accomplished or are being accomplished? If parents are expected to support and enforce dress code policies at home, they have to be educated on the policies their students are required to adhere to. How long have the policies been implemented? Or why was it originally implemented? Does the issue still exist? What data shows how it has or has not helped? I'm not sure if uniforms are a good idea, but I'm not convinced that they provide a direct correlation with student achievement. What is the point using time and resources to enforce a dress code that is only enforced at one of the three middle schools in the same division? That time and those resources could be redirected to help with literacy or math skills. And I know from working in the school, a lot of kids come to school, even requiring them to have uniforms and some of them can't even get to school with a, with a book bag or paper and pencil, what they really need to, you know, receive the instruction. And I just thank y'all for y'all's time, y'all's consideration.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clark, we have no more speakers. Thank you, thank you very much for all of your coming forward to the board and making comments known to us. Thank you. This time we're going to Human Resources, and that means Mr. Scott Ziegler.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman. I am happy to present to you the board report for the month of January 2019. Once again, this month, I'm proud to present that we have received a grant in the amount of $2,000 to support mentorships for career switchers, new teachers who are licensed under a career switcher license. I also would like to thank Dr. Bracy tonight because he issued a, or he made a partnership, not sure how he did it, with the YMCA of Southampton Roads that gives all PCPS employees a 25% discount, which they can use no matter what city they live in. So thank you, Dr. Bracy, for that. And that would extend to board members as well. One of the goals the department had this year was to extend our reach on social media and to use more graphics and video in our recruiting efforts. And so tonight, I'm happy to present to you a video that was created as part of our recruiting efforts for the principalships that we had at James Hurst and West Haven Elementary School. And being that it's Oscar season, I think you will agree that this one will be right up there in the canon of great films. We did test it. Do you need the jump drive?
While you're testing it, I want to know, I want you to know that when I went to the Y this past, the last weekend, I got my $20 deducted, so I'm going to be paying $20 less. Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Appreciate that. I can use that for the tolls. Right, sir. While you're doing this, you want us to go ahead and approve the transaction?
Sure, yes. At this time, I would like the board to please entertain a motion to approve the transaction report as presented and discussed in the closed session.
Motion, motion's been made in second. Do we have any, do we have any discussion? You've had a copy of that. Hearing no discussion, seeing no discussion. Board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clark?
Eight yes votes, one no. It passes.
Okay. Now, we're ready for the Academy Award. Are we ready? Oh, there we go.
So in those videos, we shoot for a timeframe under 35 seconds so that it's bite-sized and available on all social media platforms.
And the Oscar goes to Portsmouth Public Schools.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Ms. Schumate?
He will say Scott Ziegler, that's who.
Hi, have a question. The child, or was that like a image or something like that, that was drawing? Was an actual child?
It's, it's a hand. It's actually a program.
Oh, okay.
And then you do step-by-step. So we don't do the hand. It's a.
Gotcha. I was just wondering if that was an actual child of Portsmouth Public Schools.
No.
Because that would have been awesome.
No, that would have been great.
I'm not throwing any type of shade, I'm just saying. It's okay.
Ms. Hines?
Yes, thank you. Quick question. Is it somewhere where we can post it on our own social media so that we can get some more? Because we all know people and places and get, so is there, is there a way that we as a, as a face of this board can use this to help us with recruitment?
Sure. The HR department has a Facebook page dedicated to HR. I'll send you all the link to it. I think it's PPSHR. And then my Twitter account, which is @schoolSZ, so school in my initials. And coming soon, we'll have an Instagram account as well. So, but right now it's on Facebook and Twitter.
Very good.
And LinkedIn as well.
Good. Thank you.
All right.
The next item is budget and planning. Mr. Fox? Welcome to Portsmouth Public Schools.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair, Mr. Patillo. I present the December 2018 monthly financial report for approval.
Board members, you've had an opportunity to read that. What is your pleasure?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made in second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing no discussion. Board members, make your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clark?
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's monthly report. Dr. Bracy, you've been a busy man here.
Yes, sir. Just a few things I want to highlight is that the, as you all probably are aware, our high schools have been taking the SOLs and finishing up this week with the retesting. So once we see where, once they finish, we'll be meeting with the schools and finding out exactly how we're doing. But preliminary results are looking, looking good. As we spoke earlier, we've been working on the budget. We've been surveying with the department heads, principals, and with the survey of the community. And now, hopefully next week, we'll be meeting with board members, getting their input on the priority of some of the budget items that we will look at for the 1920 school year. And February 7th is our next work session. And at that time, I will be presenting the superintendent's estimate of needs. So at that time, we will be able to get input from board members on the priorities that we have gathered. So we look forward to the feedback from you as we present this to you. The finance, finance staff, along with all of the departments have been working together. And you will see the, you will see all that come together on the 7th at our next work session. As Mr. Parent mentioned, we do have a council school board liaison meeting on February 6th. So we're looking forward to meeting and working on some agenda items for our joint meeting that we will have later on within that month. And also today, we, we had a meeting with the, some of the city representatives where we were interviewing the final three architectural firms that we were, that we're looking at for the, the new school. So our folks have to get together and tally up the, the information that they reviewed. And we should have a decision on, on an architect. So that's where we are with, with that process. And we'll keep you posted as we go. And that will, that concludes my comments.
All right. The next item on the agenda is board comments and concerns. Ms. Allen?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate Victory Elementary School on a wonderful health and fitness family night last night. I had the opportunity to go out there. They also had a healthy food market with the Food Bank of Hampton Roads providing a great deal of fresh produce. I'd like to shout out Dr. Ruth Jones Nichols from the Food Bank of Hampton Roads in the Eastern Shore. Dare was out there, our Sheriff's Department, Humana, Spirit Enhancers Dance and Cheer Crew. It was a, a great success. It was packed out there. So congratulations to the team over at Victory Elementary for a stellar event. Tomorrow from 10:00 to 5:00 at the Portsmouth Public Library on Court Street, there is a vintage Norcom photo gallery exhibit. So you can go back and see some of the history of IC Norcom School over at the Portsmouth Public Library on Court Street tomorrow, Friday, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And then lastly, Saturday, January 26th, it is a weekend in Wakanda at the Children's Museum of Virginia where 93-year-old Dorothy Steele, who played in the movie Black Panther, will be on hand taking pictures, Q&amp;A questions. There'll be arts and crafts out there. So we're celebrating a weekend in Wakanda, Wakanda forever. Saturday the 26th at the Children's Museum, it starts at 10:00 a.m. Come out and meet 93-year-old Dorothy Steele, who actually started acting in Black Panther.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Atkinson?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. I just would like to congratulate one of our students. And that is Jamal Brown. If y'all don't remember, Jamal was in here speaking before. He was the tall one. He's actually ranked number one by coast to coast for class of 2005. So he's ranked number one overall out of US and Canada, from kids in Texas, North Carolina, New York, Florida. He's the top basketball player in US and Canada. So I just would like to congratulate him. And he's a product of Portsmouth Public Schools.
Reverend Patillo?
What was the, what was the, the class?
Of 2025.
25?
Yeah, 25.
I thought 2005. Okay. Reverend Patillo?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. I had the opportunity to visit Carratt Middle School last week. And I just wanted to give kudos to the principal there and the staff. The building was very clean. The hallways were quiet. The students were working hard. And we hear a lot of negative reports. But I wanted to give kudos to their staff at that school. They've done a wonderful job.
Good.
At Carratt Middle School. Also, I received, I was supposed to give kudos to the special ed department of Portsmouth Public Schools. We hear a lot about that also. But I received a call from one of the Head Start directors in Portsmouth and talked about how we were proficient with providing services to their children at Head Start even before they enter public schools. That's a great thing to hear also. So kudos to you for that. Also, Ms. Schumate and myself, we were at the Capitol Conference in Richmond the last two days. And we were there advocating with our legislators on behalf of the governor's budget, which includes 5% for teacher raises, but also reducing the guidance counselor ratio from, from what it is now to 250 students to one guidance counselor. And he's putting about $36 million in the budget for that also. So we were there advocating for that and also advocating against bills that would hurt the school division and our students. So continue to call your legislators and look at the bills online, see what they're trying to approve, see what's in committee, and make calls to advocate on behalf of our students for that. Also, I want to thank the team for the E-Firm for coming out on tonight. I'm going to visit, I promised Winter Van when she invited me that I was gonna come. So I will be there to tour the facility. But thank you for coming, for what you're doing for our children also.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. I just got just a couple things. First off, Vice Chair Patillo, he had mentioned us and I figured he would because you were there. But I did wanted to say thank you to you, Ms. Schumate, and I believe also Ms. Williams, for keeping us informed with some of the bills that are coming before the General Assembly. I've been following a few of them with, with keen interest at this point. Which brings me into my, my next topic a little bit. And I know we got a report earlier about how many openings that we have at schools and the rationale and the reason for it. But consider with me just some data and information that I have done some research on over the last two weeks with regards to some things. For example, that teachers with benefits, their salaries is about 11% less than most other career options. But yet, when you look at the, the jobs and when you look at what teachers do every day and what they face in their classrooms, another statistic that has came out that 47% of all children experience one form of trauma. One. And when I say trauma, I'm not talking about like name-calling, which can lead to bullying, and that is trauma. But we're talking significant issues. A parent that's incarcerated, a divorce, the death of a parent and, and whatnot. 47% and 22% of children experience over multiple traumas. Now, what am I getting at with that? When you have a classroom of 30, 33 kids that comes walking in there, and you have a teacher that has their own family, their own problem. that has their own family, their own, uh, problems, their own issues, maybe even with their own trauma that they're dealing with, on top of 33 other students, and half of that classroom has multiple, uh, cases of trauma, that is significant. That is very significant. And so, what I'm saying with this, I know that the General Assembly is looking at a 5% pay increase. I know that based upon how it is written and so forth, we got to come up with half. I also know that our part, because we gave, we found the 2% last year for it, that we're obligated for, uh, three. But, I would like to say that based upon the statistics that I've shown, that I'm, that I shared tonight, and even you could go further, even from the VDOE, that shows that teachers as a whole, 22% does not return after the first year. 50%. I would propose this, that if we can, and I know we're at the very beginning, and we're going to talk to Dr. Bracy, and I thank you for the opportunity for that, but I think if we can make this work, and if we can, working with city council, as well as looking at our own budget, based upon what is going on, I would like to see us, if we can, get our teachers and our staff across the board more than 3%. I would also like to see if we could possibly even look at resources that would help to mitigate some of these issues that, as I have said about trauma. Uh, hence, I had brought this up before about the trauma inform, uh, seminar that I went to, and the statistics that were shown, and I would be more than happy to share that again. Um, I, I just think that across the nation, people are not going into education. We need to try to do the best job that we can to maintain and keep the teachers that, that we do have, especially the excellent ones, um, that we have. All of them do a very good job with what we do, and I just think that personally, um, I would like to see that towards the top of, of the list, and that's actually one of the things, I believe, Dr. Bracy, it came up in our survey that was shared early about, uh, teacher pay. So, um, and on a last note, if we could, I'd like to get an update with regards to where we are as far as our success with the addressing of the chronic absenteeism, since, uh, that is now part of the accreditation of schools. I'd like to see if our plan and our efforts that we, uh, implemented at the beginning of the year, where we are with that and how's it going, and what's working and what's not. Uh, thank you again, Chairman Parent.
Thank you. Mr. Barnes?
I just want to give a shout out to Douglas Park. Um, last Tuesday, on the 15th, they had reading and math night. Um, they had games like reading jeopardy and math jeopardy. Um, also, I spoke with a teacher and she told me about a class that they have that went paperless. And what that means is they're, they're, they're not doing anything, um, as far as writing, they're doing everything on a tablet. And she said that the grades and the behavior in the classroom has improved. So I just wanted to give them a shout out for that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lamb, you bled into a comment that I'm going to present to the board of, now that, now that the rules have changed and, uh, attendance is now part of our SOL accreditation and the dropout rate. Now, for years, we have always, as a board, wanted to, um, have a full hearing, full board hearing. In other words, all of us, all nine board members would hear the, uh, the, participate in the board, in the hearings of discipline. Uh, at this time, uh, I think that, and I've asked Ms. Jarris to come, uh, I would like for us to begin to look at a three-panel board, because if we don't, board members, we're going to be in a situation where we're going to be hurting ourselves. And, uh, how we do this, we can work out the details. But I wanted her to come tonight and just, uh, review that with the board, and then it will be on the agenda for the February meeting. Ms. Jarris? You can either come to the platform or whatever's comfortable for you. Jarvis, I'm sorry, Ms. Jarvis. I'm so used to calling you Danielle that I didn't want to... Ms. Jarvis, thank you.
So, under the Virginia Code, the school board can elect a subcommittee of at least three school board members to preside over hearings, student disciplinary hearings regarding short-term, long-term, um, and expulsions. Under the current policies and regulations that the Portsmouth Public School Board has in place, this subcommittee only acts on, uh, recommendations for expulsions. So, if the board is interested in creating this subcommittee to, uh, review recommendations from the superintendent regarding expulsions or short-term or long-term disciplinary actions, there may need to be some changes made to actual policies and regulations. Um, I've also had the opportunity to review some of the policies, regulations, and bylaws of some of your neighboring school divisions that actually do have a subcommittee of school board members that preside over these, these hearings for these student disciplinary matters. So, the code gives wide latitude to the school board to kind of set up certain parameters with respect to how these meetings should be, uh, hearings should be conducted, and as long as the policies and regulations that the school board puts in place adhere to, um, these parameters, you're kind of, you know, able to conduct a hearing as opposed to having this full board hearing for these disciplinary matters.
Right. And once the, the panel makes the decision, it doesn't come back to the board for approval?
If it is a unanimous decision of the three voting school board members, then it would not be appealable to the full school board.
Okay. And the other thing, we would have to advertise in favor that it is...
Yes, because in order for it to be effective, there has to be a vote on it, and it has to be voted in open session. So anytime there is a hearing conducted, there would need to be public notice.
Okay. All right, board members, just want to put that on the agenda because we need to talk about process. How do we, how do we do this? And I think there, there are two ideas, and I don't want to share them tonight, but we can talk about it next month, okay? All right. Last item is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I agree with you.